I'm excited that we have a moment of silence for Charles Comer, who is the brother of Paul Buck and the husband of Hope Comer. Thank you.
Okay, first up, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
He said here.
There is no, there is no sound for Zoom. He is here on Zoom, though.
Have him wave.
What do we do, councilor?
Mark and present. If somebody wants to call him on the phone.
He's here. He has to do sign language.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here. Eight here, one on Zoom. Mayor?
I'm at podium number two today, about to report to the council in March 25th meeting. This is my activity log for the last two weeks. We had the 38th Annual Hammond Sports Hall of Fame at the Hammond Civic Center. I know there was a number of council people there. Excuse me. We all appreciate you coming. We honored new inductees into the Hall of Fame, six new inductees, Dennis Hardisty, Marie Herring, Andy Jusick, Dr. Joseph Markovich, Damon Rogers, and Joseph Golvas. Congratulations on being inducted into the 38th class to the Hammond Sports Hall of Fame. Had meetings with the emergency communications team. This team has been meeting often over the last year, and it was accelerated after what happened at BP AMICO. We got together and I challenged this group to come up with some type of action plan that would make it easier during emergencies, like the BP AMICO situation we had a couple of months ago. We couldn't communicate well with our residents, and I thought this was a hindrance to communicating that we were, you know, the situation, what was going on up there. This task force came up with a program, a software program they've been studying called Everbridge, and we've decided to move forward with this at a cost of $16,500 a year. You'll be hearing more about this in the future, but this is a comprehensive alerting package that covers both emergency and non-emergency alerting to the citizens of Hammond. Once the software is implemented, we'll be able to send forced emergency alerts to the citizen of Hammond that are in the affected area of the emergency, like if we were flooding and we wanted to alert everybody within a particular area, we could do so. Like if there was a tornado coming, other emergencies like BP AMICO, if we were getting proper reports from them, we could echo them to our citizens in a forced alert, which is the loud alert that we get on our phones. It's forcing it onto your phone. We also have non-emergency alerts that you're able to do with this system, where you can opt into that system, sort of like we do with Hammond 311. So we're going to be talking more about this with our residents. I imagine this is going to be able to be accessed by phone through some type of app, sort of like we do already with the Hammond 311 system, and I'm looking forward to breaking that out in the coming weeks. Had the annual disabilities breakfast at the Dynasty. I appreciate the council people that attended that as well. We honored some businesses and individuals that helped greatly with this particular community. The business award went to the Ramada Inn. The individual award went to Kenneth Zubek. Individual adult volunteer award, Trina Cantrell Ross. Caregiver award to Margaret Smith. The youth award to Tracy Newt. The Charles Nagy Award went to Jessica Simmons. And the mayor's commission distinguished honorary award goes to Pamela Ballantyne. Thank you to all of them and to all the people that were nominated. Had the honor of serving in HC3's annual Hessville Parade by Down Kennedy Avenue. I was the grand marshal this year. I appreciate HC3. I know Councilman Rakels has a lot to do with that parade. We had excellent weather and a big crowd. Thank you very much to HC3 for letting me be the grand marshal, and it was really cool to go down to brand-new Kennedy Avenue. It's really, with the shrunken Down Kennedy Avenue, it's perfect for parades. Looking forward to going all the way down Kennedy like that. Had a phone meeting with the CEO of Franciscan Hospitals, the CEO of the entire hospital chain. We had a, it was our second meeting in the past couple of months. We, I met today with three council people, and we went over the site plan that I talked about with the CEO. We had a conversation about the old hospital site, issues with the parking garage that's on that site, the type of fill that's going to be used on the footprint of that, and other economic development matters. So I think it was a productive meeting. So appreciate Mr. Leahy for reaching out, and like I said, it's good that we're finally communicating between us. Met with the FOP negotiating team regarding the proposal the FOP gave to us in regards to significant pay raises they're looking for. I've been trying to keep the council up to date on that. I'm willing to discuss this with you guys. I'd rather do that in some type of executive session or one-on-one, if you don't mind, as opposed to talking about it publicly. I think the initial negotiating meeting with the FOP went well. It was, it was very positive tone the whole time. I think that they have a problem right now with keeping people in their ranks. We understand that's a problem, and I know the council's aware of that as well. We've been talking about this for a while. So we'll keep you in the loop on that, obviously. Met with the president and the vice president of Hermits Baseball League in regards to a proposal they want the city to consider, and we're going to move forward and talk to councilmen and other people about that, if it would be feasible. Appeared on a panel of mayors at the annual LCEA breakfast in Briar Ridge Country Club. LCEA is Lake County Economic Alliance. I appeared with Gary's mayor, Eddie Melton, Hobart's mayor, Jodah Shuttleston, Crown Point's mayor, Pete Land, and Maryville's councilman, Sean Pettit. I made the case for our city and why it's important to invest here. I think it was a good appearance. We were on the front page, which is good for business, I think. Met and interviewed 12 senior-level Hammond firefighters, interviewed 12 senior-level Hammond firefighters. I posted the number-two job in the Hammond Fire Department. I think that's probably the first time that's ever happened. I know Clerk Golick could probably shed more light on that, but these jobs don't get posted very often. We posted it. 12 people applied. I'm interviewing all 12 of them, and I think the interviews went great, and one of those 12 is going to be our next deputy chief. So, which means we're not going to bring somebody from outside of the department. Appeared on WJOB with Chancellor Holford on Purdue Northwest's weekly radio show. Spoke about the impact lab that Purdue Northwest wants to put in downtown Hammond, Dolly Park, the sportsplex, and the future of PNW. Think it was a good meeting. Had a meeting with the leadership of the Hammond Boxing Club about fundraising and its possible future locations. Attended the retirement party for our fire chief, Jeff Smith, retiring after 32 years on the force. Bernie Grisolia, the new chief, he's the deputy chief transitioning into the job of fire chief, is slowly assuming responsibility. So if you have something big, I call Bernie first, because Smitty's sort of in that mode where he's transitioning out and Bernie's transitioning in. So if you have anything in the fire department, you can still call the chief, obviously, but you might want to get to know the new chief a little better. So, good news, the food and beverage proposal was signed by Governor Holcomb and is in law. So next step for us is to present to the Hammond City Council our proposal, and obviously we have to debate it here locally and decide if we're going to go forward with that. But that's the first time in 20 years of being mayor that a Hammond-only bill is passed to General Assembly and been signed by the governor. So I guess you stick around for 20 years, anything could happen. That's all I got, unless you have any questions. I appreciate the council giving me this time.
Do you have any questions? Councilman Kornstein.
Good evening.
Hi.
Regarding downtown Hammond and the 200-unit site.
The what, councilman? I'm sorry.
The building that was going to house 200 units in downtown Hammond.
You're talking about the?
Across from?
Taylor Row, the one that didn't go forward?
What happened?
It's finance. Okay, well, there's a couple. We had three developments going with housing downtown. One of them, the bank is full systems go, they're going to be leasing apartments in the spring. We had Taylor Row. I forgot which one was which. I believe Taylor Row was the one that was across the street from Toll Theater, all right? That one was a difference of opinion. That's a fair statement. I'm not trying to say, we've done business with this person in the past. I don't think he didn't, we had a difference of opinion about the future of downtown Hammond, okay? And it's not going to work if he was a large landowner and basically we bought him out, okay? It was our property to begin with, we ended up buying it back from him, and we're looking at another developer for that piece of property. The one across from E, I believe that's the one you're talking about, that one is sort of failing for a lack of financing right now. Interest rates are real high, the banks are required a lot more. That one is struggling on financing. It's still a go theoretically, but we have to financially get the money. Not that we, the developer.
I got you. Hard times.
Yes, sir.
For the one we bought out, what, how much did we have to put out for that?
I'm going off the top of my head. It wasn't, it wasn't a lot. I mean, when I say it wasn't a lot, it was less than a million for that property and the building, so.
Less than a million, you said?
Yeah. I don't remember exactly.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I don't want to, like, throw stones. This developer that we were working with, that we had a disagreement with, we did great business with in the past, so I was hoping we'd go two-for-two, and it didn't work out. Sometimes that happens. You know, if you're going to be investing a lot of money in downtown Hammond, you've got to see things the same way the city does, so.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Next up, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
I move that we approve the minutes from the March 11, 2024 meeting, and we place them on file, please.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated March 12, 2024, and ending with claims dated March 19, 2024. Claim number 2472 through claim number 2945 inclusive in the amount of $8,913,106.92. I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second by Councilman Warple. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
You can't hear him. He mouthed, yes.
Thumbs up.
If you look at his face.
Thumbs up.
I got him on the phone, but apparently it's not working. All right.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Claims passes 9-0. Okay, next up, public hearings, we have none. Communications.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I'd like to just make a reminder, I'm hosting my second annual Easter egg hunt this Saturday, March 30, at Columbia Park. This Easter egg hunt will start promptly at 12 o'clock noon sharp, and it's for children ages 12 and under. There'll be free photos with the Easter bunny. There'll be golden eggs that will win them prizes, such as Easter baskets, and the Hammond firefighters will be there as well, participating, handing out some prizes and supporting the community. Should be a fun event if we get some good weather. We have some sponsors as well for the event. Sponsors include La Hacienda Azteca, Mexican restaurant, McCoy &amp; Sons Tony, Walmart Supercenter, and El Taco Real, Mexican restaurant. I'd also like to take the time to say a big thank you to the Hammond Public Works Department and Supervisor Juan Serrano. I had put a ticket in requesting cleanup under the Holman Avenue Bridge near Strack and Van Tills. The area's pretty heavily scattered debris all over the place, a few mattresses, some large items, and Mr. Serrano, Supervisor Serrano, was able to put a crew together today and clean up the area. It's not 100% clean, because there's a lot of debris everywhere scattered from the dumpsters, both at Family Dollar and Strack and Van Tills, but we're hopeful that some of our community cleanups that we're targeting this summer should pretty much pick up the area completely. And so I want to say a big thank you to the Public Works and Supervisor Serrano specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Councilman Salinas.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. You said that Easter egg hunt's at 12?
Yes, 12 o'clock noon this Saturday.
So it'll be over at 12:01?
It should be over about 12:01, 12:02. They'll be, kids will be scurrying around to get their prizes and whatnot afterwards and cracking open their eggs. Columbia Park.
Thank you. Anybody else? Communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, councilman.
The Capitol Improvement Board, our next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, April 18, 2024.
That's our next meeting, is until April 18?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Yes, as usual, I'd like to read off the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. A community watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, April 17, 1 p.m. The East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch Meeting will be Tuesday, April 16, 6 p.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch is not going to meet in April. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, April 2, at the VFW on Holman Avenue at 6 p.m. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April 18, 6 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, April 12, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet Thursday, April 11, 7 p.m. at Trinity Lutheran Church on the corner of 173rd and Holman. Whiting Roberts Dale Crime Watch will meet also on Thursday, April 11, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College, and our former chief of police, Brian Miller, is going to be the speaker at that meeting, and he is always a treat. As usual, I encourage everyone to attend a community and crime watch meeting. We, as residents, need to be the eyes and ears of our neighborhood and our city for our police department. If you see something, say something. Even if it seems insignificant to you, it may be of great significance to our Hammond Police Department. They are there to keep us safe so we can sleep at night knowing that they are there to protect us. So please, support the police department, be their eyes and ears, and attend a community or crime watch meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilman. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you. The Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will be meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, at 6:30 at the Hammond Mohawks Club located at 141st and Calumet Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President. One more announcement. We have the mayor's night out on Wednesday, Wednesday, March 27, at 6:30. This, this mayor's night out is in the 2nd District. It's at Irving Elementary School, which is located at 4727 Pine Avenue. It's a great opportunity to come out and discuss any issues you might have directly with staff and department heads, so I encourage anyone throughout the city, but 2nd District primarily, if you have any questions, now's a good time to come out. It's in our district, we're the host site, Wednesday, March 27, begins at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports is closed. Ordinance, third and final reading, there are none. Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 24-07, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, an ordinance to appropriate funds in the hotel motel innkeeper's tax fund for economic development purposes in 2024.
President?
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
First and second reading, public hearing set for April 22, 24, and also council as a whole, because the meeting's set for April 22, 24, at 5:50.
Second.
The second by Councilman Emerson on 24-7. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Ah.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
President Rakels, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. Next up, resolutions, we have none. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Rich, Richard Spatelli to the Building Contractors Board.
Second.
Got a motion, a second by Councilwoman Vines, to reappoint Richard Spatelli to which board? Electrical Board?
Building Contractors.
Contractors. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
He's sat on this board probably, I don't know, eight to 10 years now, and he's more than qualified.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes 9-0.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Ron Cazzo to the HVAC.
Sir, a second.
HVAC Contractors Board.
Second.
We all know Ron, he's.
Second, Councilwoman Vines.
We all know Ron, he's been the owner of Cupcoto Furnace Company for about 30 years now, formerly Cupenger, but this is just a reappointment as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes 9-0.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kornstein.
Make a motion to reappoint Ron Lubis to the Electrical Board.
Second.
Got a motion, a second by Councilman Spatelli, Ron Lubis, the Electrical Board. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, council.
Mr. Lubis has been on the board for a number of years and operates and owns his own electrical company in the city of.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes 9-0.
Any other new and unfinished? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. First up, we got TJ Gertig.
So this, this one's mine now?
It is now.
All right, cool, cool. Good evening, everyone. So I, I come bearing great news. Yesterday, we had a fantastic cleanup at Briar East Woods on Parish Avenue. We had around 40 people come through cleaning up, and many just stopped by just to reminisce about their memories in the forest, or, or just show support for, you know, what we're doing out there. We had tons of cars honking, driving by, seeing all the bags of trash we got out. It must have been 30 or 40 bags. It was, it was a ton of trash we got out of there. And, but it was really awesome meeting a whole bunch of new people we'd never seen before, that, you know, and they were just telling us all their different memories as kids walking through there, about how their grandkids go through there now. And we, we met one guy walking through the forest, he hadn't even heard of our cleanup. He was just, you know, getting ready for a week at work, and we asked him what he liked about it. He said, "This forest is so important to me. It's my sanctuary, you know, a way to get away from the city." And that's really important, because Hammond has a large population for a reason, there's great jobs around here, you know, it's a great place to live. And I think we all know, you know, the urbanity of it, concrete, you know, the traffic, these places are really important to people, and they make a difference, and they make Hammond a great place to live. And so I had the thought while we were out there, because I've been, you know, seeing more of different city cleanups around, and I was thinking it would be extremely effective to clean, help clean up Briar East Woods if the city of Hammond were to host a cleanup there. And, you know, it, it can be hosted by any one of you, you know, there, there were people from all over Hammond, North Hammond, South Hammond, you know, neighbors of mine, so it, it's important to the entire city, and it's used by the entire city, it's cherished by people that have lived in Hessville over the years. So I just wanted to throw it out there, I think it would be a great idea, and if anyone's interested in that, please, please come talk to us, or just host it on your own. But, so yeah, I, I just wanted to impress upon you, you know, the, the benefit of having a forest in a city. And, you know, if we're to, if we were to build Governor's Parkway through that forest, it would, it would destroy it, it would take it away. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next up, Ken Rosick.
I have not-so-great news for you. The Governor's Parkway Bridge will endanger the lives of residents. It is now clear that the mayor and this administration put profits over public safety when they designed this bridge. When this project was first announced, the mayor said the road was for the mothers to pick up and drop off their children from school. He kept saying, "It's for the mothers, the mothers." Taking a closer look at the design, we see it does nothing for the mothers or the children. The pedestrian bridge they are planning to help bail them out of this embarrassing situation does nothing to help as well. Does anybody know what happens on Grand Avenue when a train blocks the crossing during school Cars start taking, making U-turns and driving in every which direction to get to the other side. Why would the mayor say this was for the mothers if a pedestrian bridge only handles pedestrians? Now the street that does help the mothers is getting a ped bridge, doing absolutely nothing to help them. Governor's Parkway is a three-mile detour for autos, two miles for pedestrians. So which is it? Are the streets too busy or not busy enough? When it comes to emergency response time, the Governor's Parkway Bridge will add time When it comes to emergency response time, the Governor's Parkway Bridge will add time to each and every response on the other side of the tracks by closing the fastest route of Parish Avenue. Before anyone got to see the design, city officials were boasting, "Every second counts, every second counts when it comes to emergency response." They tried to demonstrate that by coming up with worst-case scenarios that rarely ever happened, and what-if stories told by loyal department heads, all the while never mentioning there are two fire stations in Hessville on either side of the tracks for that very reason.